Tonight, we say thank you to a very special chief, who is stepping out of the role and welcoming our new chiefs. But to start off, if I could ask you all to please join us.
United States of America, and to remind you for which stands one nation, one God, in this world, liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask everyone, please remain standing. Unfortunately, this week, we lost a very special member of the village family. He worked in public works, a family that's been very active in public for three years with us. And then, we lost John Teneke, very unexpectedly and suddenly so long. Could I ask you all to please keep him and his family in the first? Thank you all very much. Again, welcome. I understand that we will be receiving our new chiefs as they walk through the door in a second. We will be screening our new officers, so look around, I would ask you all to hit them a high sign somewhere here. John?
Is it on? Do you need it?
He doesn't need it.
It's just got the second.
I don't need it, you know that.
I don't need to put that on. Pouring water just in case?
Pouring water, yes, I've never heard you say "hi," we'll be already figured before it says.
Mayor Long Body, Deputy Mayor Captain Stedall, Trustee Dr. Lynn Montegna, Trustee Archie Chang, Trustee Frank Terra, members of the village administration, chiefs, members of the department, residents and guests. I stand before you tonight extremely armed and humbled as chief of the 45th Fire Department to give my final report for the year 2018 and '19. This is the status of all the department. Membership: The department currently has 182 members consisting of the following. Active membership is 151, including 109 firefighters and EMS, 25 ex-chiefs, full honorary chiefs, 13 probationary members, 28 associate members, and three chaplains. This year, we score on eight new members and six reservations. Alarms: For the year, EMS calls 905. Fire calls 224, oil accidents 41, hazmat-related calls 8, carbon dioxide alarms 44, mutual aid to the town 83, for total calls 1,305, with a property acquired worth $125,000. Training: From the first moment we are sworn in, hands-on training begins and never stops. All firefighters participate in monthly drills, as well as many hours of hands-on training and annual department operations training at the Fire Academy Bethpage. On the EMS side, the commitment is just as great, if not greater. Our EMTs put in hundreds of hours in classrooms, as well as taking New York State tests to get their certification, which they do very well. Each year, they spend numerous hours at continuing medical education classes as well as regular drills. All members participate in periodic department drills, drills with other departments, an annual Molwex drill where we interact with FTMY, and an annual paternity drill in Nassau County. This year, our members accumulated 4,918 man-hours of training, testament to their professionalism and dedication. Thank you to Chief McAllister, Chief Norton, and their committee for their hard work and dedication to the training program. Probationary training: We have our specialized in-house brokering training to our new members on how full fire operates and getting familiar with our equipment. Thank you to Chairman Winnie Packnett and his committee for all our hard work and efforts with this. Purchasing: This year, there were 57 purchase orders and 148 vouchers processed. Thank you to the village administration, Jerry Brandler, and village deputy treasurer Catherine MacLeod for all their help and assistance with our purchasing needs. Medical and fit testing: Each year, our members are required to take an OCE and interior firefighters are required to be fit tested for their CVA masks. Thank you to Chief McAllister and Winnie Packnett for overseeing these and ensuring our members are current. Radios: Radio communications are an ongoing problem. We constantly strive to find solutions and improve on what is our most important piece of equipment, our ability to communicate. We revise that Grand Avenue Security, who purchased new portable radios, is currently awaiting approval from Nassau County. The department is a fire unit for real people. A 2015 Ford 450 ambulance, 2004 Pierce 95-foot tow ladder, 1984 solitary heavy rescue, which you still don't.
And will forever.
Yeah, God bless Mac. 2002 Spartan solitary engine, 1997 Spartan solitary engine, a 2018 Ferrari engine, thank you for that, 2018 Ford Transit van, 2003 Chevy Express van, 2009 Ford Expedition, 2008 Ford Expedition, 2009 13, 16, 17 Chevy Cows, and a 1931 American La France antique. Workhorses: This year, 59 vehicle workhorses and 14 house of workhorses. Thank you Superintendent Steve Swinski, Deputy Superintendent Deputy May, and all the village mechanics for their hard work and dedication with this. Pump, ladder, and hose testing: All ladders and hoses tested as required. Any damage caused is removed and replaced. All three engines have their annual pump test. Explorers, who are great kids. Our squad program is things deprived on the police service, Chief Florio, ex-chief, or ex-captain of our department. We advise the members, at this time, there were 11 active members and five advisors. Prays: The department participates in two prays this year. Life Walk, School of Man and Pray, and National Academy of Pray Kids. Fire prevention: Our fire prevention is ongoing for both inspection and education. Our formal inspection program has our members going business-to-business to inspect and review what and any hazards exist and put it out in the business source. This also gives us the opportunity to learn about the value of businesses and people in buildings, but at unfortunate times should be applied. All this information is embedded in our regular system. This year, the department has upped to 363 inspections. Thank you to Chief Men, for the hard work, organizing all scenes during the time of season's end. The education side involves formal programs as well as everyday calls. When we enter house of business, we're able to oversee the extinguishes and alarms of present and see if they're up to date, if they are being repaid. It is still too often, we enter house and there's no smoke protectors and no carbon dioxide protectors present. We told the homeowners about this and stress the safety issues and need for them. We also give out fire outdoors, and welcome groups such as Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, schoolchildren, and also visit groups in town. We show them the equipment we have and how we operate, as well as provide handouts. This year, we coordinated seven separate tours between schools and various community organizations. Thank you to Chief Thompson, Boya, and his teammates of six, Eric. None of this all was happening without many people involved, and I would like to thank some people. Mayor Long Body, and Board of Trustees. Thank you for your time, and for continuing to do and support us, it's greatly appreciated, it really is. Commissioner McAllister. It's been a pleasure working with you and your fire chiefs of the department. Thank you to all your officers and staff for your great job and their support. To Jerry Brandlick, Sue Walsh, and your entire village hall. Thank you for all your hard work and help. You make the day-to-day things happen, it's very much appreciated. Chief of Grading Chief Waitress. Thank you for all your hard work in the office. You guys are the backbone of the office. The Chief of the Body, the firefighter Paul Pinto. Thank you for your hard work with them. The Chief Bennett, Chief Norton, Chief Florio, and Chief of the Body. Thank you for all your guidance and showing me the ropes as I made my way up the line with the chief. It was a pleasure working with you. To my staff. Sal, Pat, Mike, and Jeff. What a great year it's been. I can't thank you enough for all you did this year. I know you guys continue to do a great job. I couldn't have asked for a better staff. Brian, Old Moon Boy, I know you do a great job. To my family. I'd like to thank my mother and father for starting me on this ride 49 years ago. My kids, Gianna and Nicholas. Thanks for always being with me running out at the most important times. And also calling my chief, my wife Gina. Thank you for always supporting me and being my rock. I could not have done this without you. I love all you guys. Lastly, I'd like to thank my warriors. You truly make this department the best there is. Your dedication and hard work shows in everything you do. I can't thank you enough for allowing me the honor of being your chief. I will forever be honored. The village is truly blessed to have you. Mayor Long Body, Board of Trustees. It is my honor to introduce an amazing group of dedicated gentlemen, the newly-elected chiefs there for the 45th Fire Department for the year 2019-2020. Our assistant chief, Brian Hammond. Our assistant chief, Peyton Thompson. Second assistant chief, Mike Sillwell from the Hope Valley. Our assistant chief, Patrick McAllister from the Action Department. Chief of the Department, my right-hand man. Chief Sal Torrego from the Relentless Rescue. Mayor Long Body, I have one final word to my warriors. Hydrate, 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 and HTF build. And now, to the question, do you believe that my duty is as chief of the 45th Fire Department? Thank you very much, Chief.
David Michael, I do. I know there are a couple of people who want to say a few words before I get started, so with that, I would first turn to our current Fire Commissioner, Trustee Richard Chang.
Hey, I'm quite bored with this, but I had the pleasure of meeting David when I was a pro fireman and his father was my baby chief back in 1978 or '9, I'm not quite sure. And I watched him grow up. He babysat my kids, my three boys. He worked in my office, he went off to the Navy, and he was spelt, I'm sorry. He was a lean meat by definition. Hey, that week, you know, that is when he worked in my office, we called and ran him off. He was always willing to do something, but he would run head-on to the task and we never knew what we were going to get. But he was someone you could rely on, do anything and everything. It has been a pleasure watching you grow up over these 40 years at least that I know and watching your family grow and in your wealthy life. And knowing mom and dad like I do. You've done a great job and we want to thank you for all you've done.
And now, I'm going to turn it over to the person you work closely with, and that is our Fire Commissioner, Dr. Lynn Montegna.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank Mayor Long Body and my fellow trustees for my appointed Fire Commissioner for the past two years. It has been an interesting, exciting, and humbling experience. A whole volunteer fire department, the chiefs, officers, firefighters, and rescue staff, all heroes. As you train and work tirelessly to save lives and property, I have been honored to witness firsthand the value of your contribution. We're also here tonight to pay tribute to Chief David Michael and his 27 and a half years of service to Orion's Company and the department since 1991. His contributions as lieutenant and captain, his five years on the chief's staff, and his past year as chief of department. Chief Michael's expertise in firefighting is partly inherited, part training, and part experience. He is the son of former 45th Chief Rick Michael, who has been a member of our rescue company for 49 years since 1970. Chief David Michael is also a Nessa County Fire Marshal, a position that has given him keen insights into the causes and behavior of fires. It has been said that Chief Michael has the ability to see through the walls at the Nassau County Fire Services Academy, and by observing the fire and the smoke, determine exactly what every one of his firefighters is doing on the inside. I think that's true. Tonight, we thank Chief Michael for his dedicated decades of important contributions to our village, as well as his service to our country as a member of the United States Navy. A special thank you also goes to the Michael family, Gina, Gianna, and Fire Department Explorer Nicholas Michael for all their contributions and the sacrifices they have made so that Dave can serve. And to Chief Michael Senior, Pat, and Peter for their years of love and support for our department too. And now, Dave, as you surrender all your chief and department responsibilities, we hope that you and your family have more time to do what you love most, like drifts to Sheep's Head Bay, and all the shrimp you can eat, and lots of exciting road trips and adventures in your new picture. Thanks to all of us and to all of you, for me, working with you has been a real pleasure. God bless.
And again, we have the entire village, thank you. I know it's been a long haul and a lot of fun for you. It's a great feeling, and I have to tell the story, ladies and gentlemen. My full-time job involves, or previous full-time job, involved taking care of abandoned homes throughout the town of Hempstead. And I have this one house that was what I would consider would make the Collier House or any house that is on any clutter TV show look like it was a mansion, the way this place was. And we had all kinds of issues and problems, and I can't tell you, it was just a disaster from the word down. And at one point, we had a call in the Fire Marshal, and I see the truck pull up, and I see Dave get off. And at that point, everything was just taken care of. It was just that feeling to know that we were okay, everything was taken care of, everything was done, and we wouldn't have any issues. And that's the way they ran the fire department. And I just want to say thank you so much for giving us that safe feeling, that feeling of confidence that we never had to worry about anything. Because not only is it that you do this for your living and you do it, you did it for the love of everybody here in this village. And we can't thank you and never say thank you enough for that. And I'm telling you right now, it is just an honor and a pleasure, and we thank you so much for your friendship, thank you for being by my side this year, and you and all the things that you've done, everybody, we can't thank you enough for that. On behalf of, again, all of us, Gina, thank you so much. We don't get to do these things, I don't get to be there if Denise lets me out of the house, okay? And the reality is, is that Dave, in the position of chief, it's the same thing. You know, there's so much that goes, and work that goes, and involved in everything, the things that all of our firemen do. Just the training alone, we've all said this before, the training alone that a fireman has to go through and that all of you go through. The hours and time you spend at the firehouse taking care of your equipment, the work that you do to train, the work that you do to provide education to our many residents. This is all on top of, God forbid, we actually have an emergency that has to be resolved. And the reality is, is that the hours and time that you're putting in. There's a reason we call the fire department operating as volunteers. And it's all of you, you are operating as volunteers. You are here, in day in, in day out, making everything happen. From buying equipment, to running the office, to making sure that everything is done so that everyone of our residents who goes to bed at night and feels comfortable, feels safe, and feels like nothing except what might happen tonight. We can't thank you enough for that. And Dave, you've led that this year. You understand, you and all of the people here. You know, we had some fun, we got to buy a new piece of equipment this year and test all that out. I don't surprise you, but here, I don't think he's allowed these to, and it doesn't have keys, but I don't think he's got the keys to the good truck here. But the reality is, is that, you know, everybody says, why don't we move these pieces of equipment? Why don't we do this? Why? Because we all feel safe in that, and all of you need that happen. And again, thank you so much. Patty and Mickey, thank you. You gave us something very special. Not only did you teach him how to be a chief, you yourselves have done so much for this church. And ladies and gentlemen, this is where it all starts, is thank you so much. Thank you so much. Again, this is a wonderful family of fire department. And it works. Together, we put everybody here with everything that they possibly can and can personally receive. Thank you so much, I know for that. And the fact that I know you're not going out, the fact that I know you're still going around. We will gladly accept the fact that you're with us. So thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, as Davis said, it's a low-oil machine. So now, as we go forward, that leading that low-oil machine is this year's new chiefs stepping up. Sal, Pat, Mike, Jeff, and Brian. Thank you for all you do. To all of your families, thank you for giving them to us. It is our honor now, it's just where you live. So I'm going to ask, we're going to do this a little different this year. We're going to ask the board to come down, but we're going to ask you guys to do is to please stand. Come forward, and then I want to ask that all of your families come up and join you. So if I could ask the five of you to come across and for their families to come up. And I'd ask the board to come down for me. If I ask the chiefs, please raise your right hand. I appreciate it. Stop me, sir. The Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the state of New York. It wasn't one of these, it was a 45th Fire Department. And a 45th Fire Department? And I broke the promise. David, yes, you. It's a result. Chief of the 45th Fire Department, or Assistant Chief of the 45th Fire Department? The rest of my body. Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, chiefs of your fire department. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to conduct the rest of our village board meeting. I know this probably, I think it's fluid more fun, but we'll all sort of, we'll join you a little bit. We want to welcome the state. Congratulations, David.
Thank you, Mayor, for coming. Legal notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given at the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Coral Park, New York, upon the public hearing in Village Hall, 1 Coral Boulevard, Coral Park, New York, on Tuesday, April 16, 2019, at 8:00 PM, in relation to the following application. The application made by Benjamin Ford, on your own, over 225 Jericho Turnpike, Coral Park, New York, 11001, is made in accordance with Chapter 99, Article 1, Section 99-11B1 of the zoning ordinance of the Incorporated Village of Coral Park, New York, which sets forth a permitted uses and special uses in a D2 district, and which provides that in a D2 district, a restaurant may only be erected, altered, or used when authorized by the Board of Trustees as a special use after a public hearing contested by the Board of Trustees. This application is also made in accordance with Chapter 99, Article 1, Section 99-6, Schedule of Regulations, which requires an additional 20 parking spaces in which no additional parking is provided. The structure for which said special permit is applied is situated on the north side of Jericho Turnpike, 65 East of Pinstale Avenue, and known as 225 Jericho Turnpike, Section 8, 159, plus 136, 140, and 147 on the Nassau County Land and Tax Act. A copy of the application is on file in the office of the Village Park, 1 Coral Boulevard, Coral Park, New York, and may be examined by any persons interested therein during business hours Monday through Friday inclusive, except legal holidays from 8:30 to 4:30 AM. Now take notice that all parties interested and citizens will be given the opportunity to be heard at the requisite time and place by order of the Board of Trustees Incorporated Village of Coral Park, New York, Susan Fools, Village Park, the legal notice is dated April 3, 2019, and has been published in the initial paper of the Incorporated Village of Coral Park, New York, a post according to law, and sent to the Nassau County Public Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to place on record that the applicant had previously filed an affidavit of service indicating that all neighbors who had entered 200 degrees of the world had been served with bad news. Okay, with that, I would invite our applicant to move to the podium. I guess it should be swatted.
Just wear a couple of tassels, my guy. Yes, you are. My name is Keith Shreida, K-D-I-P, Shreida, S-T-R-I-G-A, I'm the architect for the owner. Benjamin Boganyum, B-O-R-G-N-O-N-A.
Okay, before we start it, I just want to thank you, Mr. Boganyum, for all your dedicated service to the village and for keeping your business here. We're keeping it up. So I do want to say thank you for that. That is definitely nice. And thank everybody that I was asked to go to.
I thank Floyd Parker for giving support to me. Throughout all the years that I've been here now, it's like 26 years since then. So, many years here, and thank the people, Floyd Parker, that's great.
And I have family coming from other places. And also, I'm very grateful that you're holding your business there as well.
Yes, I will tell you that.
Thank you. With that, I would ask you, please, go ahead and present your application.
Good evening. We are in front of, this evening, we're in the front of our zoning deals that have now been granted in regards to the bakery's looking to open a bistro adjacent to their existing current bakery where everybody in the village knows was the former florist. That building looking to convert to a bistro. And we'll speak a little bit about the details of this bistro. But in order for us to continue the process of the hopefuls for the building park over here in front of you for the change of use for a restaurant.
Okay, so I'm not really sure what I'm supposed to be saying. But I can tell you a little bit about what we're going to be, the place is going to be beautiful. Hopefully, the people will accept it like they accepted the bakery. It's gonna be like a breakfast, lunch, and a light fare dinner. As far as, there's going to be some sort of alcohol. I don't know if I'm supposed to mention that, but.
I'll tell you right now, it's one of her questions, so you might as well talk.
Yes. So we applied for the liquor license. We have not received it yet, but it's in upstate against, with the liquor authorities. And I got a letter, I got a notice there today that they're so backed up that it's gonna be a little bit longer before they approve it. It's not, you know, it's not, it's approved, it's just taking a long period of time that they're backed up. It's hoped to be a French bistro. You know, mix, you know, have everything, we cater to everyone. If anyone's been in the bakery, we cater to all sorts of people, nationalities, religions, it doesn't matter. And we have an existing place in the Hassett right now, Cafe. Same thing, same concept. I'm planning on going, and we've been there for 50 years now. And it's, they're doing well, the same situation, the parking is always an issue on Long Island. And, you know, we try to do our best with moving people in and out of the bakery so they come in and out. So, I don't know, any questions? I don't know what else to say at this point.
We actually do have a series of questions for you, and then we'll open it up to the public.
Yes.
So, but in short, again, we all have questions for you to answer. But that's your mayor candidate, Mr. Joe.
So, thanks, thank you for coming in, and thank you.
Good evening.
For 26 years?
Yeah, it'll be 26 since then.
What are the both hours of the meeting?
Okay, so we're continuously from 6:00 AM or 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM.
On the Sunday, I mean, Sunday?
Seven days a week, yeah. Possibly closing on Monday, I'm not sure yet. This is new to me. I'm a patient chef. My kids, since they last went to college, now want to go into the food industry. They're pushing me to go and get into the rest of my business. It's new to me. Possibly 9 o'clock, you know, I don't know, I have to feel it out with how they accept it.
But 9 o'clock would be a little bit.
I believe so, yes, you know.
I couldn't easily tell on this seating chart how many people would be in there. Like, one of those like 42 people, is there like a back room that would have more?
There's no back room, it's pretty much open, the whole.
You don't want that, but.
Can I come up?
Yeah, sure. I mean, this looks to me like to the front room and the back room.
Okay, no, this is just a walkway. You have access to go to the bathrooms.
Oh, okay.
That's just an access, that's all that shows.
This is the new building?
This is the whole building.
Right, okay. Is 42 seats here?
Correct. I don't know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Well, allowed 65, I believe was, but they allowed us at the.
We're going to conform to the rank, to the rank. I don't know exactly, I think it was 55 or 65.
I think it was 65. 65 was another.
Um, will there be any, uh, employees having wired at the table?
No, absolutely not.
Uh, what about deliveries and excess of deliveries you're getting today?
Uh, deliveries will be the same times that we get them. Right now, we receive deliveries on Wednesday and Friday. Uh, I don't know, and I said about the food business. I know in Hassett, we also receive it on Tuesdays and Fridays.
Would it be the same delivery trucks that deliver to the bakery? Or would be additional trucks delivering?
It'd probably be one more additional company that delivers food, actually meats and dairy.
How many additional employees will you have?
Uh, I'm estimating at least three to four. That's like full timers, and then everybody else are kids, like waiters, waitresses.
And where would they park or open at?
You know, as far as parking goes, I know that there's still this for parking on both sides of the Pinstale, on street parking. And I believe that they perhaps may have asked me to buy a few parking spots, which is not a problem for me. If you purchase two, three, and four for the employees, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, and then, let's see, garbage, where would it be stored?
Garbage is in the rear building where we have it now. We, yeah, so the bakery is right next door to the florist, which has easement. That's one of the reasons why we bought it. We do that way. But we bought it, by the way, we bought it because I didn't want someone coming in there and telling me that I would not be able to use the easement that goes through the rear of the building. And some of that, we also are going to provide parking in front of call for some of our employees back there. There would be room for parking.
But you would store garbage outside until it's picked up?
Yes, it's the way you have it, that's where it's stored now. That's where we have the containers.
Excuse me, private car?
Private car?
Oh, yes, private car, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow and finish that thought, how often is it picked up?
Three times a week.
Three times?
Yeah, Monday, Wednesday, and Saturday morning.
With that, the chancellor, Dr. Nukemondo?
Hi, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Have, do you see the bakery part changing news lately?
Uh, no. I don't know if I should mention this now, originally, we have 36 seatings. Right now, we're approved for 36 seating at the bakery. Probably get myself in trouble there, but. And then I gave it some thought. In order for us to receive, when they granted us the 65 seating, they, I said I was gonna eliminate all the seating from the bakery. Then I gave it some thought, because I think some people still would like to sit in the bakery part of the building now, and rather than going into the cafe, bistro, whatever, it's gonna, you know. So, I was thinking, I don't know when I'm gonna have to come back again in front of the board. I know I'm a little all over the place, so I wanna explain it. So, when we applied for the bistro, for the seating, the variance, I said, you know, we was eliminate everything. And then, you know, I saw my wife, she gave up the seating, I mean, she says you should keep at least eight to 10 to 12 people that maybe did perhaps want to come in for a cup of coffee and a Danish, rather than a whole breakfast at the bistro. So, I guess we can eventually determine if they can allow me permission for that, or not.
If I may just interrupt. Does he have to go back to the zoning board?
He had, actually, this application first came in as a ancillary use to the existing bakery. Then he was gonna open the new bakery to the existing bakery and then have a seating for the bakery in the new unit. So he's gonna eliminate all of that seating. But I noticed that these plans are good, but it's gonna be a scandalous shot. Variants before eliminated the seats in the bakery, the bakery built it up. He wrote a letter to the Board of Appeals, and the Board of Appeals still.
Due to building code and space regulations, we, his eventual goal was kind of on this path is that we're looking to make an opening between the bistro as well as the bakery, but it's separate tax lots. It's two separate buildings technically right now. And we're looking to, once we get all our parking and all the code compliance on the village end and zoning end, that with the fire marshal will be able to put a door between the two buildings with a fire shutter off if there is a fire that would close off, but he wants to be able to have the businesses interact with one another through that firewall. Is the ultimate goal, we can't file, we did not file for the building to be merged into one building, one CO. It's two separate COs, one for the bakery and then the florist. And the offices above was its own CO prior to any purchasing department.
The issue with parking for the variants, one of the reasons they granted you the parking variants was because you were baking out the seats in the bakery. So, that's the rationale for that.
We're still standing by that decision. And we were, I was asking why the letter, and the board came back with the letters, and you have to re-apply. But we will visit that at a future date, seating in the bakery, not at this time.
If we can discuss it now?
But you can.
Okay, yeah.
It's a good idea.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
That's why I was asking you questions before.
Yeah.
It does not come before this.
Correct.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Just to clarify on that. Um, we are looking at what's been approved by the zoning board is up to 60 seats in the bistro, but no seating in the bakery.
That's correct.
That's correct, okay, so. What kinds of foods could you describe a little bit, what the names called?
I can describe, I think I can try. So we're gonna have soup, salad, craves, I guess, some seafood, some burgers. Not such, it's not, it's not a restaurant per se, you know, it's, the difference between a bistro and a restaurant, I'm going in all these things as I go along, is that the portions are a lot smaller. And it's not a full, it's not white table floor, it's just, you know, easy going, easy atmosphere. Did I say craves? Now, what else, paninis, you know, eggs in the morning, pancakes possibly.
And do you see, do you envision three meals a day since you're old?
Three meals, yes, yes.
And will you have, do you envision distinct hours for breakfast, lunch, and dinner?
Yes.
With this time between when you wouldn't, bistro wouldn't be open, or would it work? Continue to serve without that?
The bistro is going to be open at the same time as the bakery will be. I'm not certain if it's gonna stay open later, because people may want to stay late. I don't know how it's gonna be. When I did the bakery over two or three times, I went, you know, initially I was open until 10, 11 o'clock. There's no one to be found at that time. Now, over the last eight to 10 years, thank God, I've been fortunate enough. Sometimes I can't close the door until 3:00, 9 o'clock, and the kids wanna get out of there. And I, you know, I'm home too. And so, I don't know, maybe it's changing, the times are changing. And, you know, I don't know how the bistro is gonna, I'm hoping that I can't close the door there also. You know, I don't have the answer to that at this time, I'm being honest. I can tell you 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, you know, I'm. I can tell you nine o'clock, ten o'clock, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that we can stay open late, but I, no later than nine o'clock, my goal is, because I wanna be home. That's the answer for now.
Thank you for following.
Okay. Trustee Chen?
At present time, how do deliveries come in?
Deliveries for the...
Bakery, the bakery?
Oh, it comes on, it's on Hensel, the side street, I have a, uh, a delivery entrance on the side of the building, on Hensel.
And that's where you still expect deliveries coming?
No, because it'll be coming in through the back entrance, through the easement, prior to bringing back the building.
You expect only one additional vehicle coming in with...
Yeah, because, uh, the company is called Ace Indigo, and they supply all the material for, uh, the bistro, the cafe already right now in Hazzard. So, we only had a, one additional company.
At present, you don't have alcohol at the bakery?
I do not.
That, tell me, that, that company's gonna deliver alcohol?
Okay. So you wasn't thinking of all those options?
We're talking.
Well, I, I don't know how often alcohol is delivered, and, you know, again, to me, it's all new. Uh, I hired a manager who has experience in this, I can manage that again tonight.
Well, the problem with alcohol is that most of them have separate distributors, so you have several different trucks coming in because somebody's got exclusive on, absolute on, for this thing or that.
I want you to understand, everyone, and I'm, I'm, I'm not a big fan of this whole bar thing. And I'm not trying to have a bar per se, atmosphere, I want this to be kid-friendly, okay? That's my main objective here. I don't like this whole bartender, my kids are gonna wanna kill me, but I'm not into this, I don't like it, and only, and I understand, it only brings problems, I get it. If you were to deny it, I'm okay with it, I'm very honest. My life, I'm at least at a point in my life, so I'm not a big fan of it, although it's good for business, from what I understand, and it would enhance, yes, I understand that, it's all about the bottom line, okay? But, I understand how that works, so the bar will not be a focal point, right? Is that what they said? It's not, it's not intended to be. It's gonna be a nice, if someone wants a cocktail, or a mozzarella, or Bloody Mary or something, it's fine.
Just a quick question. The fact that you don't want the bar to be the focal point of it?
I don't.
There may be a way we can help with that. Would you stipulate that the bars only open at the hours, that the bars only open the hours that the establishment is open? And then, the establishment, we can set the hours to close at a certain, certain time, so meaning, you want to be out there at nine o'clock, we could stipulate in the agreement with us that it's open until, let's say, ten o'clock, just, and that the bar close, you know, bar closes, we can totally do that.
I think that would be fair.
Okay.
Because you say ten o'clock, if you say ten, I think it's a fair deal.
No, I think that might stop your problem as well as...
I would feel better about that.
Okay, we can talk about that.
Okay, but I, like I said, I'm not so keen on, I'm not a big drinker myself, so maybe you, but it's good for business and it draws in people that, you know, wanna have a cocktail with their lunch and have a glass of wine. And I know I'm Italian, but I didn't drink wine at dinner, so...
No, and being the fellow who's actually...
Yeah, I understand that. So, I'm just gonna be, so...
Okay. Trustee Chia?
Yes. Will the ovens in the, in the bakery be used to prepare food for the bistro?
Will the ovens in the bakery be used to, well, some of the bakery products will be, you know, I'm gonna bring some of my base meats over to the bistro for dessert.
Talking about specifically food in the bistro?
No, no. No, I'm gonna have to apply for the board health and go for that whole kitchen.
And the basement in the bistro, what is that for use for?
Refrigeration and prep area, and storage.
Okay, and then, the only, I think one of the only questions I have now is, the upstairs of the building?
Yes.
Right now, would you leave that office space?
Yes.
Would that remain office space, or would you cover the plants?
For the purposes of the application, it's going to stay as office space currently, what, and this is, who gets, uh, the owner is exploring the idea of converting it to residential use, to put four apartments up there, but he doesn't want the decision, I mean, this is, does want the decision based off of, right now, currently, it's filed, it's CO'd for office use. And as we all know, office use, and we can drive down general term hike, and then you can just palate and see four rents, four rents, four rent, and there's a need for affordable housing for, for the adolescents or the younger generation that's living in the basement, so he is exploring the idea of putting in up to four apartments on the second floor, but we can't make that as part of this application at this time.
Fair enough, I, my concern about is, of course, would be that you would be using it for kids or something along those lines.
Oh, never.
And then, again, it exacerbates our traffic problems and...
If, if you were to look at and visit the office upstairs, that prior to the owner purchasing, has been renovated since nineteen fifty-five, or said has been with Alaning, it's one of those things, it's still currently legal CO, but we're looking to eventually make it, and it would actually help alleviate the parking problem if it becomes residential, because it'd be a lot less required parking than for the forty-five hundred square feet, or whatever, twenty-two, what's the square foot, three thousand? Three thousand square feet of office use to be down to four apartments, so the parking would definitely decrease at a future date.
All right, thank you. And then, just turn over to, I'll just turn you over to Mr. Trump, in case they have any other questions.
I'd like to contact you about that stipulation with the local authority restricting the hours, I've done it with other businesses in the village, and, um, so I'll speak to you afterwards to get your information.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions? With that, I'm gonna ask you just, if you don't mind that, if you could just take a seat, and just see if anybody in the audience has any... Do they have any questions? Okay, with that, um, do you have anything else you want to add to the application?
Me? I want to thank all of you, number one, I'm a nervous speaker about going into this business myself, so I'm glad you asked me some good questions, and I hope I answered your questions, uh, and I hope that it give me a blessing, and we get this place rolling and start to do some construction.
I will, I will offer this to you, that any other questions you may have, or any other questions, and, please, we are here, every one of us is here to, to help, we appreciate it.
I know you guys are all been great to me all these years, you made me sort of build up this beautiful business that I have, and I know you guys, you watch out for everybody, I understand that, I really do, but as a parent, I get, and I, I understand what you guys try to do, all of you, all, hardworking, okay? That's pretty much, I don't wanna get myself in trouble, okay?
So with that, well, thanks. Since nobody else submitted questions, can I get a motion to close the public hearing reserve decision?
So...
This whole should be, please, both of you.
Trustee Chia, Trustee Pabana, Trustee Chen, Trustee Chair, and Mayor Longbo.
Hi.
Because I don't want that, getting any more trouble, it's not maybe, I'm afraid of finishing you by now, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we will, our administrative council, thank you so much. I want some sort of objection?
That's all right.
Would you want to say more, more consideration, or some expected decision?
Uh, go ahead, we're probably gonna get reached today.
Okay.
How it is, I think you said.
You two guys, Bill, Jerry, David, we'll be in touch when you're ready to, uh, some of that information.
Thank you, Mayor Longbo. I would ask the board to approve the minutes of a second regular board meeting, the longer one, uh, four, of late intent, and the budget hearing available.
So, any discussion, all those in favor, or opposed, this can...
I would ask the board to approve the schedule of the council table, as the following, federal funds, six hundred fifty-seven thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars eighty-nine cents, spending pool, five hundred ninety-four dollars nineteen cents, community development bureau, capital fund, eight thousand five hundred twenty dollars and fifty-five cents, for rental of six hundred sixty-seven thousand and fifty-six thousand sixty-eight cents.
I want that resolution.
Second, any discussion, Ms. Walsh, please, both of you.
Trustee Chia, Trustee Pabana, Trustee Chen, Trustee Chair, and Mayor Longbo. I would ask the board to ratify the DVD proposal for engineering services for field survey and mapping at L. C. Focus Avenue for training work, scheduled under two thousand nineteen road improvements program, in the amount of eight thousand dollars.
I want that resolution. Second, any discussion, Ms. Walsh, please, both of you.
Trustee Chia, Trustee Pabana, Trustee Chen, Trustee Chair, and Mayor Longbo. I would, I would ask the board to ratify the approval to retain vertex for construction observation services relating to the third track expansion project for the following sites, and or were performed at South Tyson Avenue by ducks, retain wall installation, live demand name underpass, the four clock station package, and standable installation as presented in the proposal.
All of them are resolved, second, any discussion, Ms. Walsh, please, both of you.
Trustee Chia, Trustee Pabana, Trustee Chen, Trustee Chair, and Mayor Longbo. I would ask the board to approve the application to subdivide the property located at forty-eight Willis Avenue, as per submitted, as per surveys submitted by the applicant.
I'll vote for that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh, please, both of you.
Trustee Chia, Trustee Pabana, Trustee Chen, Trustee Chair, and Mayor Longbo. I would ask the board to approve the presented law party applications in accordance with section thirty-two dash twelve, Dave.
So, second, any discussion, all those in favor, or opposed, this can...
I would ask the board to approve the request of Little Knights of Little League to use the Red Center Baseball Field from April to two, to December two thousand nineteen, subject to receipt of certificate of insurance.
So, second, any discussion? You can't say one question for December?
That's what the other person said.
It feels close.
Do you want a minute? Or do you want to just analyze this?
Until it feels close.
Until it feels closer.
All right.
So, as amended, as amended.
All those in favor? I, I oppose, this can...
I would ask the board to approve the ice cream vendor licenses for original deal from Mr. Salting and John Peebles Utan from M. Salting, and according to section one seven dash ten of the village code, and having fingerprinted names by the four clock from Mr. Park.
Definitely on for a resolution. Second. Any discussion, Ms. Walsh, please, both of you.
Trustee Chia, Trustee Pabana, Trustee Chen, Trustee Chair, and Mayor Longbo.
I don't have that in the experience.
I would ask the board to approve the request of the United Methodist Church to use Heritage Park on Sunday, April twenty-first, at seven AM, to hold their annual Easter morning worship service.
So, second, any discussion, all those in favor? I, I oppose, this can...
I would ask the board to approve the request of the National Columbus and LA Victory Catholic Church to use the Centennial Gardens zippo to hold a mass on Saturday, June fifteenth, at five fifteen PM, subject to receipt of certificate of insurance.
So, second, any discussion, all those in favor? I, I oppose, this can...
I would ask the board to approve the request of the Forum Conservation Society to host their annual garden on fundraiser on Friday, June seventh, at Centennial Gardens, and in case of rain, at the recreation center, subject to receipt of certificate of insurance.
So, second, any discussion, all those in favor, or I oppose, this can...
I would ask the board to grant the application of Catapano Engineering and Architecture PC under the general term fight for a park, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the decision resolution.
I'll vote for that resolution, second, any discussion, Ms. Walsh, please, both of you.
Trustee Chia, Trustee Pabana, Trustee Chen, Trustee Chair, and Mayor Longbo. I would ask the board to adjust the budget for fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty.
I'll vote for that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh, please, both of you.
Trustee Chia, Trustee Pabana, Trustee Chen, Trustee Chair, Mayor Longbo. I, I just, Mr. Chair, is it that? Mr. Chair? I would ask the board to authorize a transfer of thirty-five thousand three hundred twenty-two dollars and eleven cents from a contingent account, zero zero one nineteen hundred nineteen ninety, to Snowy Mobile account, zero zero one fifty-one forty-two oh one hundred, to cover Snowy Mobile all time.
I'll vote for that resolution, second.
And we'll just comment, thank you, I feel like we're not doing so much snow this year. Ms. Walsh, please, both of you.
Trustee Chia, Trustee Pabana, Trustee Chen, Trustee Chair, and Mayor Longbo. I would ask the board to ratify the approval to offer a ten percent discount for pool membership when a current pool member sponsors a new pool member, entitled in both subscriptions, should receive a ten percent discount as at, excuse me, as outlined, uh, I'm sorry, as per the conditions outlined in the pool recreation booklet. This discount ends on Friday, June second.
So moved.
Second, any discussion, Ms. Walsh, please, both of you.
Trustee Chia, Trustee Pabana, Trustee Chen, Trustee Chair, and Mayor Longbo. I would ask the board to ratify the approval to offer guest pass to pool members, when invited, guest passes received, two free passes, as per conditions in the recreation pool booklet.
I want that resolution.
Second, any discussion, Ms. Walsh, please, both of you.
Trustee Chia, Trustee Pabana, Trustee Chen, Trustee Chair, and Mayor Longbo. I would ask the board to authorize the promotion and appointment of Casey Ned as assistant pool director for the two thousand nineteen pool season at the rate of eleven thousand five hundred fifty dollars.
I want that resolution.
Sir, any discussion, Ms. Walsh, please, both of you.
Trustee Chia, Trustee Pabana, Trustee Chen, Trustee Chair, and Mayor Longbo. I would ask the board to award the police patrol vehicle minivan under New York State Department number one eight one two hundred ninety-five for a two thousand nineteen Chevy Tahoe to equal quarter month sales in the amount of thirty-four thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars and nineteen cents.
I'll vote for that, second, any discussion, Ms. Walsh, please, both of you.
Trustee Chia, Trustee Pabana, Trustee Chen, Trustee Chair, and Mayor Longbo. I would ask the board to authorize Mayor Monkboi and Village Administrator Vanberg to sign the state and municipal facilities program grant for the renovations of the Atlantic Avenue Firehouse in the amount of two thousand dollars due to the efforts of Senator Phillips and Senator Caplan.
I'll vote for that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion, Ms. Walsh, please, both of you.
Trustee Chia, Trustee Pabana, Trustee Chen, Trustee Chair, and Mayor Longbo. Finally, I would ask the board to accept the letter of entitlement of Officer John Brochance after nearly thirty years of service in the police department, effective April twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen.
I will also have resolution, gratitude to all the work you've done in those years, especially for the, what's it, right, the use of the resource officer, um, to begin.
I'll second that motion, same.
Any further discussion, Ms. Walsh, please, both of you.
Trustee Chia, Trustee Pabana, Trustee Chen, Trustee Chair, and Mayor Longbo.
Again, thank you all for this hard work of the use. Okay, thank you. Governor, Mr. Bullock, trustee, and that would be the end of the show?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, a few things, regards to, uh, Daman, I would like to thank all the residents that attended Senator Caplan's Mobile Office Meeting, this is the library, this is Friday. There were a large amount of residents, more than we start by twelve, who raised multiple issues with the program informed Senator on the significant issues that the project as currently proposed will present before call. As of today, there's no set date for the E S D to release the F I S. E S D board typically meets once a month, with the next meeting being disturbed. In general, those meetings will release the day to before the release. Today we called E S D, and as of this afternoon, there were no Delmar committed on the proposed agenda, but of course, that subject changed. We certainly know residents know as soon as we hear the date time, when the E S D board may vote on the F I S. With regards to trees, uh, this week, uh, actually today, the village saw affecting approximately a hundred trees throughout the village. We ask the residents to take care of the new trees that they can grow, to they expect to height, to provide all the benefits that we've come to expect. And lastly, briefly, we go to the police department this week, the Department releases two thousand eighteen N report. It can be found on their webpage, Facebook Twitter page. I would like to encourage all residents to take a few minutes to read through the document, to get a better understanding of services and superior draw on the ball, so no trustee China has to tell all the comments as well as you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good evening, young. For the recreation center and pool, I'd like to report the following, this past Saturday's pool, hopefully, we pray a little bit dead. Our spring and summer sport season is in full swing. Come down to the rec center to cheer on our local athletes, both young and those who are older. As we head towards the June ninth opening of the village pool, watch for your copy of your recreation book, filled with registration information and pages of enjoyable summer activities for those of all ages at the rec center and pool. See page seven of this book for the exciting details about discounted sponsorships and new memberships for two thousand nineteen, along with guest, guest pass options that will support members who wish to invite guests, may now... See page seven of this book for the exciting details about discounted sponsorships and new memberships for two thousand nineteen along with guest, guest pass options that will support members who wish to invite guests and may now do so less expensively by purchasing ten guest passes for the price of eight. Pool registrations are announced and register early for the coming season. The Cobra Chamber of Commerce, uh, as the partial closure of Cobra Avenue, North Stewart Avenue is now underway. Please intend to patronize our floor park and Stewart Manor businesses and shop all over.
Thank you very much.
As far as the fire pump and Chief Mike, we gave the report on the fire pump, so let me pass on that. For a third track update of the twenty-two hundred feet of supportive excavation of lull construction on the south side of the right away, approximately thirteen hundred feet has already been completed. There's about a hundred fifty feet remaining until the Linden Avenue tunnel is reached. We have been advised that retaining lull work should begin in the next two weeks. In mid, late May, mid to late May, work will commence with the construction of the three elevators at the railroad station. Phase one entails utility trenching, which will commence with Atlantic Avenue being closed at Carlton for about one and a half weeks. Carlton then will reopen for about two and a half weeks and work will continue underneath the railroad tracks. During phase one, thirty-six parking spots under the railroad will be lost. All ten parking arrangements are being finalized with three T C. Sometime between mid to late June, phase two will begin. Phase two also involves trenching, which should last for three weeks. At that time, no parking spots under the railroad will be affected. There will be no parking on Caroline Place, however, and there will not be passenger drop off or pickup on Caroline Avenue, Caroline Place side of the station. Phase three involves excavation and installation of the elevators. That work should start in July and is expected to last five to six months. During phase three, twenty-four parking spots under the railroad will be eliminated. There will be no parking on Atlantic Avenue from Parks Tavern to Dalton's funeral home and ultimate parking begins being removed. Throughout this work, the station will be open and ticket machines will still be functioning. Tomorrow at nine o'clock, the intersection of Tulip, Pervia, Atlantic and Plainfield and Agloeia will be striped and signed to be installed, clearly showing the intersections as a gum block of ox area, as, a gum block of ox area. However, if it rains tomorrow, it will be pushed off and have to sit. A right-hand turn lane is being installed on southbound Plainfield at Whiteline Court within the next few days, weather permitting, also. And finally, we have finally heard from the county that they agree that they will do some synchronization of bikes on Tulip Avenue. Um, they have, we're out there today, it's my understanding, doing correct observation and we're supposed to hear very quickly. Uh, but we don't know what their recommendation is going to be because of the traffic. That also can be changed or being put, that's presently installed. But that's ordered.
Trusty Chair. Thank you.
Uh, at our library, there's going to be a book sale sponsored by the Friends of the Library during the weekend of May fourth and fifth. Fundraise will be used toward the renovation of our young and old area in the library. All are welcome to, to come out and support this event. With the new residents committee, the new residents committee will be hosting a welcome to our community event for all our new residents on Sunday, May fifth at the pool. There will be representatives handle information from number of our community organizations, letting the new residents know about their groups. Information about our village services will also be available. Light refreshment will be served, advice will be going out shortly, and all of our new residents are welcome to attend.
Thank you very much. Uh, just two minor announcements on Montgoly Park. Beginning Saturday, May fourth at nine thirty, we will be having first of what we are calling, uh, open houses. Uh, and that will happen on the first Saturday of every month somewhere in the village. Uh, we will move them around the village, but myself and possibly several members of the board, um, will be available from nine thirty on Saturday mornings to eleven thirty. Uh, we will be, this one will be held in, uh, village wall that Saturday, um, just to allow people, if you have issues or things that you need to talk about, if you can't get here, then we, we will be here on those Saturday, on the first Sat, recording the first Saturdays of every month. So that will begin on May fourth. Um, also, I just, to echo Dr. Lindon Pabano, please, we are asking during this time of construction of the third track, um, to please remember our local businesses. Please make sure you patronize our local businesses up on Cobra Avenue. Please make sure you come to Tulip Avenue and to Jericho Turnpike. Um, it's very important, our businesses are very, very, a very strong part of our community. Um, they are very solid businesses, we want to keep them that way. And they are also major businesses that give back to all of our organizations, our schools and our children and everything that we do here. So please patronize them, uh, during this time while the construction is going on. And then finally, I just want to say a quick thank you to, uh, thank you, Felix, and to Just the Facts Media. Um, I do know it's been an extremely long day for you because we were together all day. And it was, it was unpleasant at the end of time, so we'll leave it at that. Um, but on behalf of all of us and on behalf of my family, I wish you all a very, very happy, unless it, happy Easter and happy Passover. Please enjoy, spend the time with your families and then I hope it's a, it's a good time for all of you. So with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, I oppose, is carried. And we will hold on the floor to, any residents around here?
So, um, yeah, regarding the coast bearing for the town, tiny town neighbors, um, I did speak to Ms. McDonough today. I understand that the architect is no longer participating and that we're waiting for a landscaper.
I'm sorry, you said, who's not participating?
The architect.
Uh, we're waiting for a proposal from this landscaper. Uh, it would be disastrous.
Right, they told you that the architect is no longer. So that's what I understand, so we're just waiting for a landscaper. So that should be pretty good, so that's great. Um, I just, I just wanted to bring one other thing up because I know, um, like a meeting or two ago, we had talked about how the third track was going to paint the streets once they're, um, probably finished with their, um.
They did say that.
Yeah, they're not going to paint the streets. What's your opinion?
They did a road survey project at beginning construction. Any damage that they caused due to the movement of materials to the construction, they are duly bound to repair.
Okay, so I'm on Terrace Avenue and, um, you know, there's a lot of hills and stuff. I know that's to be expected. Um, my concern though is the last time that they paved it, uh, which was a few years ago, it raised it to a point that when the water comes down, you know, there's a lot of water that comes down, it's a great, um, it caused my curb to lower, um, which even was higher, but you call it, because the street has become so hot that it, um, then the drawing of the water comes across the bottom of my driveway. And it's more of a concern right now for my neighbor's yard, um, because it flows over, um, his yard. And, and I think that they, if it does get paved one more time, it's going to raise it to a higher point where it's going to then go more onto the driveway and more into their yard. And they have a flooding problem there because their basement windows are so low. Anyway, so I don't know who do I talk to to make sure that concern is known, so when it does get paved again, it doesn't.
We'll have, we'll have public works taken care of.
Okay.
That's okay. Thank you.
Okay, should, should I write a letter? Should I, or should I do?
No, no, we have, we have.
Yeah, it's Terrace Avenue, one oh nine Terrace, and it's one oh seven Terrace, which is a house that's for sale now, um, but it's their property that's really.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can say. Thanks so much. Thank you. Happy Easter.
Thank you.
We got another thing, first.
Good morning, everybody. Um, Dave, I'm just, I'm not coming in.
Yes, Mark.
No, you don't want to, I don't even know, I have P P R. I'll get it. This is a small sample. My house is, I live in the dead end of Cunningham, Cunningham off of Cobra. It's just a small sample for you guys to consider with respect to the very first week of the, of the road closure. Um, that became very obvious pretty quickly. This doesn't involve full park, but it's something that you should bring to the attention of three T C and, and do have park. Westbound traffic on Stewart Avenue going into Cobra because the traffic light there is, is not allowing people to go right anymore. And it's time for the turn signal to make cars be able to go right on red. Um, it's backing up with almost no high park road. So then that's a problem, that's going to create problems for us because when cars do come, they become, now they're in the dregs, they're going down. So that's one thing. The one thing that I noticed in the past day, and you probably already know, heard about this, because of the windstorm that we had the other day, those sawhorses got blown onto the old bed, um, in the middle of the night. And so, you know, without, without people putting them back up, you guys might want to have to figure out something that's a little more permanent or a little more stable to be out there, especially if you look to weather, because that was a problem that, that we noticed right away. As a resident, it was coming out of the dead end, yeah, just a question.
There was, there's a metal one there?
The metal one was not there.
That didn't move.
Yeah, the metal, there was, was two of the, the two that said B F P on them and they were like, they were, they were actually out in the road.
So we could probably put sand on them.
Yeah, just so you know, the, the two of them, and it was the one on, they were the ones on Sizy that were blown out.
Yeah. They, they actually ripped the sign, the one ways.
Yeah, just so you know, I, I know it's, it's a work in progress, but I just, that's, it will only be doing it for a couple of days, but I think I should know about that as to be normal permanent. The one thing that I am noticing, and I'm surprised, well, from Marshall, from Clayton is here to, to, to bring this up. Getting off my street, the last parking spot, which is right in front of the dry cleaners, and I'm sure the last parking spot, which is in front of where the bank used to be, um, if there's a large vehicle there, you can't see the oncoming traffic. So with the increase in the number of cars coming down that street, um, I would hope that we can consider possibly making that a new parking spot so that people who are aggressive from that, aggressive from the street can actually see the oncoming cars. I'm concerned that some people will, and as a resident, I'm aware of that situation, so I think it's very easy, but a lot of people park on my street, use those, either parking spaces or you want to park on my street and come out if they do shopping, um, that they will recognize the fact that that is, that you can't really see as well. Um, when I'm driving my SUV, it's very easy to see, but when I'm driving one of my regular cars, it's very hard to see. Um, and I'm sure the same thing for Clayton as well as for us. Um, the, a last thing I want to mention, and part of this goes to what Dr. McDonough was saying. I came, I dropped my daughter off at Gable Park for stock practice today. I was coming north on Cobra and got to Tulip Avenue. I'm not sure if you realize it, but in front of the old gas station, there's a, there's a detour sign that says Cobra Avenue is closed, local traffic only, before you even get in past Kiefu. And it has an hour pointing straight down to Tulip Avenue. So I love it because then these cars aren't going to come up, up the street, it's going to make it easier for me. But to the point from the businesses, that sign really is not accurate. It should be, you know, it, it may deter people from actually going on Cobra Avenue for the shopping purposes.
That's exactly what the Cobra Chamber of Commerce is very concerned about, signage like that.
And that's what it says, it literally says Cobra Avenue closed, local traffic only, and a detour sign pointing straight down for, for local bringing to them, okay? So that's just a, a small sample for the first couple of days, but I think you guys would want to hear about it, since we were here for the board meeting, I'd like to let you know.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
If, if there's anything, you've had my son, you've had.
Yeah, you guys text us, all right?
You gotta think, think, my little father, because it helps us with that.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. So, you're all, you're all. Anybody else? Are you agreeing? With that, then you also, William, have a great day, and you have a good rest.